All right. We'll start. Should be a short.
For your love for... ...for wisdom in the hearts of the city council, we pray as they navigate the hard... ...them on words of heart and... Danny? Just as you are just, merciful as you are merciful. Here, Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Test? Test, test. All right, here we go. Closed session announcement, there is none. Change to agenda. Some of you have read the change of agendas, two minutes to talk. Give you your full two minutes. Please, in those two minutes when the buzzer goes off, please stop. And for the next person, it's gonna be a long night of just talking, so please, we want everyone to get their time in, their two minutes, do not go over. I don't want to have to give the sign to cut your mic, but so let's just do it right the way we should and... Crowd, you get your two minutes. So your voices have been heard and we received, all right? Announcements, this proceeds may be viewed on demand in the city twenty...
...on Prop 36.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I attended... Cal City's, uh...
Octavius broke this one. I said... Bad. I ground... Um, Lady Van as well. Fitting from that, and it was great for the community. Cause we kicked off our season yesterday. I said we were...
Weeks, I've read lots of letters about this, um... Weeks with lots of folks, so... Main opening. Saturday, last Saturday at Walmart, um... They did all the work, the Boys and Girls Club, they filled up one... Will be given... But it's open to everyone in the basin, so they're, they're, um, they have, I have a flyer up here if anybody wants to see it. But it's, uh, it's open to all families, all the way up and down the basin, not just, um... Limit Observatory, and the first time they had a NASA speaker. And, um, they had 110... It's great, of course, that always helps, but, um, they were, I heard...
It's good. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the ribbon cutting committee for committee, all... Hearing Ronnie's... That is it. Anyone else, last minute? Council, and we're being acted by one motion in the form listed, any item may be removed from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council.
Number five, oh?
No items removed, public hearings, what everyone's here for. Number six, 200 Palms Lighting and Landscaping Assessment District One confirming assessment... The study is before you.
This one looks like it's rebuilding. Okay. So on June 10th, the council adopted a resolution to initiate proceedings to, to put into effect the assessment for this next fiscal year. Um, there are two locations that are included in the assessment district, and this year we're gonna keep location one at the same rate, but location two, which is near the Homestead area, will be increased based on inflation plus 2% cost of living. So today, we recommend that you open the public hearing as part of the annual adoption of the confirmation of a resolution that will confirm these assessments. And if it goes through, it will be placed on next year's tax roll, these assessments, which is due by the second meeting in August. Um, again, this is an annual report that comes to us every year. And if there's any questions or concerns, please let me know.
Council, questions? You have any public forums? Surprise, no one from the public? All right, back to council. What's the resolution number, Cindy?
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2511, resolution of the city council of the city of 200 Palms, confirming the diagram and assessment of levying assessment pursuant to the Lighting and Landscaping Act of 1972 for the fiscal year 2025-27. Aye.
Councilwoman?
Right, number seven, Offland Resort Project.
Uh, the Upland, um... Uh, on approximately 152 acres, north of Sullivan Road, east of Lear Road, on the southern extension of Lear Road, west of Shoshone Valley Road, and south of Highway 62. There are multiple elements to this application, general plan amendment, general plan, amendment 24, um... 00004, and conditional use permit 24 dash three. Um, the existing zoning is residential, a single-family residential, two and a half acre lot. Uh, to the west is the Indian Cove neighborhood of 72 square foot lot minimum with RS4, single-family residential four. Uh, there's five acre lots currently to the south, more RSE to the east, and rural living to... Along Highway 62 to the northwest. The proposed general plan and zoning maps, um, is... Uh, around the development portion of their project with commercial tourists in the middle. Uh, of the 152 acres of the project site, approximately 110 acres of that would be put into open space conservation. And the other 42 acres would be put into tourist commercial, which is approximately 28% of their property. Uh, another portion of their general plan amendment, uh, here you can see, uh, the, the general plan road designations in the neighborhood. You have High, uh, Highway 62, which is an expressways, 120, uh, feet right of way. And then in the general plan, we have Indian Cove, Lear, and Shoshone Valley, Shoshone Valley Road, um, each showing 66 feet of right of way as a collector. The general plan amendment, whether portions of the general plan amendment would to remove... To establish the open space conservation zone, which the city does not currently have. Uh, this would, um, basically prohibit any sort of development, uh, except for open space conservation and some passive nature trails and that sort of thing. But it is new to the city. And if the city adopts this as a new zone, we could establish this in other areas of the city later on. So the conditional use permit, uh, has several elements to it, 100 cabin units, about 384 square feet each. Uh, each of those cabins would be 10 and a half feet tall, there are two lodges, about 15 feet tall with mechanical equipment that... And a certain... We house... Those are also about 12 and a half feet tall. Uh, they do have, uh, proposing an outdoor movie screen. Uh, this is all under... With the types of materials... Workforce housing, uh, they're all one story. Uh, materials. As, um, in the final design of this project... Space Conservation Zone at the beginning. Way of conserving this land is actually put a zone on it for conservation. Uh, the traffic... There is another entrance to... And that is also for emergency. And again, I've mentioned Shoshone Valley being downgraded, um... These types of applications, and over the course of... The scope has been reduced from 130 resort units down to 100. Um, as a result of the letters we have received, there are three additional, or not additional... Measures. Um, the... Development to comply... Before the, uh, conduct... I've got the full text of those on a separate, on a separate slide if you want. Nesting birds. Pact, um, the, looking at, they're, they are estimating 40 full-time employees. So depends on... Into $800,000 a year that would be paid to the city. Uh, the tourism board improvement, tourism board impro... Rate and their occupancy rate. Uh, this is a lengthy, uh, recommendation. Declaration as amended with the additional mitigation measures and adopt the two resol... To discuss. My presentation.
Who owns, still owns that land and how could it be, it can edit, how would it be eligible to be built on?
So, the applicant is proposing to still own it, but there'd be their responsibility to maintain it. Proposed developments or changes, they would have to come back to the city council with another general plan. Have to come back.
Thank you. In that though, is there any way to maintain that? I'm saying...
Is that, is that a recommendation that we can make tonight?
I don't have a particular objection to that.
Thank you.
Do we intend to come up and give his presentation?
We do that now or publicly? Well, I'll have them go first, so if you have more questions to add to your comments, you can add to him after he does his thing. Yeah. Is that fair for those?
Here today. It's time, I'm gonna get through this PowerPoint as quick as I can. So what is Uvland? Uvland is an outdoor-oriented boutique hotel that serves as a base camp for visitors.
Get off the property, go do what you can to do, see what you can to see and explore. And then helping people reconnect in nature is something that we believe starts the design team. So all of our projects are low impact, low intensity, and low profile. We want to blend into the natural setting, not contrast. These are the three projects that we're currently working on. We have Uvland Escalante in Southern Utah, it is up and running. We are under construction on the Uvland Smoky Mountains in East Tennessee. And of course, I'm here to talk about Uvland Twenty-Nine Palms. The reason we have this map is, to give an example, if we were Marriott, there'd be 9,000 hotels in that. We were Hilton, there'd be over 6,000. We are not a multinational conglomerate corporation. We are a small and growing business. And while we only have three projects, we are proud and excited and focused on each of those three. Since Uvland Escalante is operating, I wanted to talk about it for a second, so I'll give a reference as to what our projects are like. So Uvland Escalante, 52 accommodations spread across 27 acres, a limited package very similar to what we have proposed at Twenty-Nine Palms. Recently, Uvland Escalante got ranked the top five acre resort by Travel International Readers for 2025. I don't include that to pat ourselves on the back. The reason I include that is to illustrate the nightly break. This is all for, I believe, August 17th. This is the date that I looked at. And you can see that we are a fraction of the cost of all the other properties on the list. And we do that intentionally. Our prices are approachable and appealable to all sorts of travelers. This is not for elite, this is not for private vendors. This is for anyone that values a breath of fresh air and enjoys outside. And I did a work interview just here for me, so I included some reviews from local businesses in Escalante, Utah, asking them to describe the guests. The burgers out there, the Uvland guests are conscious people driven to spend time in the beautiful landscape, the grand staircase, Escalante National Park. And they, the owner of the town says that Uvland customers seems to not only be excited to hike and venture through our area, but also enjoy our local businesses, experience our community. And let's face it, most importantly, as a business owner, spend money in our town. So now that hopefully we've had a little bit of an intro to Uvland's concept, I want to talk about the Uvland Twenty-Nine Palms project specifically. The site plan on the left is the original site plan that we presented in the community in October of 2023, called Elsal. The site plan on the right is the current settlement. The trip over the last two years, the decrease or development amount, although by 13%, the number of cabins from 130 to 100, proposed square footage by 27%. The project is proposed above two phases. Phase one, putting 75 cabins. The main lodge is roughly 4,600 square feet. Parking, backhouse, sites, employee housing for 19 employees. Phase two adds to that, 25 cabins, a much smaller secondary lodge, employee housing for six employees. I want to talk about some individual elements of the project. First, I want to talk about our entrance. So as mentioned, Lear Avenue is a collector quarter. No matter what is built here, that road has to be paved, that road has to be approved. We are not proposing the half-wit requirement, but instead proposing the full width requirement with sidewalks, curb gutter, and the right-of-way dedicated solely on our land. Additionally, I want to talk about the entrance. So we looked into aligning the entrance with the branch road to the west. And ultimately, due to potential traffic pedestrian concerns, as well as the municipal code, it takes 150 feet minimum between intersections, we opted to bring the entrance a little south, but still remain north of the residential area to the west. On the employee housing front, our employee housing, you know, there's a few different components, a few different reasons we really would like to incorporate it into every project. One of ours being safety. If something goes wrong in the night, we'll have a manager that is seconds away from addressing that problem compared to a 15 or 20-minute drive. That employee housing is available for all employees. So if someone is renting an apartment in town, gets a job with another one, or leases up, and they want to move into the employee housing and not pay rent, it's more than welcome to happen. Also, as you can see, it does not accommodate families. So what we do in that situation is we actually provide a monthly stipend that can go to rent for a mortgage-free, two, three, four, better home in Twenty-Nine Palms. It'd be irresponsible for us to spread this project across all 152 acres. So what we've done is concentrated it to the central 42 acres. And what that allows is well over 500 linear feet between the closest building and the neighboring property. And the reason we include that is to protect the incredible views of the mountains to the south, and also to properly and more than sufficiently address any potential noise concerns. This is what our rooms are designed. You can see they're inspired by the homestead or cabins of Twenty-Nine Palms. Each of them has sleep four with a queen bed, sleeper sofa, ensuite bathroom with a front porch. Now I want to talk about the, obviously, the zoning component. As Mr. Gardner mentioned, it's currently zoned RS team, which would allow 61 single-family homes across the 152-acre parcel. We are proposing rezoning the central 42 for our commercial, and at perimeter, 108 acres to be open space conservation. In addition to that rezone into that conservation zone, we're still going to put the restrictions in conservation piece, but it'll have 108 acres protected perpetually. Now I want to compare our project to what a 61-lot subdivision would look like. From an impact perspective, a subdivision would have about three to four times the amount of square footage built. It would have about 40% more paving. It would have fencing, and it would have, of course, zero concern square feet, where we have over 4.7 million. From a view perspective, here's some rankings of what our project will look like on the left compared to that subdivision on the right, one-story and two-story homes. In addition to conserving the 108 acres, we have a couple of other elements that we really want to emphasize and talk about. One being the dark sky. The nice sky is, of course, one of the best amenities that Twenty-Nine Palms has to offer, and we want to help protect that. So all light fixtures would be dark sky compliant. Outdoor movie screen will have side and top shields to mitigate any excess light. And the conserve space will have zero light fixtures beyond the entrance. You know, at the end of the day, once this is up and running, our goal is to obtain the dark sky international lodge observation. All the buildings will be single-story to protect that, seeing a view of the mountains and the national parks in the south. We conducted a noise study that determined there will be no perceptible increases off property from Uvland. And of course, we're fully aligned by the noise standards laid out in the municipal code. Now I want to talk about community benefits. Community benefits can come in many different shapes and forms. They can look like job creation, business opportunities, infrastructure improvements you can get. So, the main lodge amenities are really and largely open to the public. So the restaurant will be open to the public, giving the neighborhood another food beverage option. The general store will be local, will be stocked with local goods and arts, giving creators and artists another place to sell goods. The stargazing area, we went to work with local nonprofits to give them space for educational talks of all sorts of things. And the pool, which then offers summer passes to the public, giving everyone another way to cool down when it's 110 degrees outside. And the last, a discount for military personnel and families to give back to those that have protected and serve our country. Now I am an out-of-towner, but I've been coming to Twenty-Nine Palms once a month for the last three years now. And every time I come here, I feel like I've learned something new about the history and culture. It's so unique and captivating, and we want to incorporate that throughout our project. So the helpful movie screen will produce an educational documentary about the prehistoric astronomical history of Twenty-Nine Palms. We want to name some cabins after homesteaded families that constructed the last garden to show that deep, deep history of Twenty-Nine. And then all the art displayed in rooms and grounds will be sourced and curated from local artists. Now, I know where our project is located on the western side of town. And so, one thing that we want to really communicate to guests and encourage guests to do is when they leave the property to handle it, right? We want to send them to Twenty-Nine Palms. So how we plan to do that is to create a downtown map that's visual, that you can scan a QR code and it provides highlights and information on every shop, restaurant, mural, point of interest downtown. And then additionally, we're going to offer, you know, we'd say, take a ride on us vouchers. And what that is, is in each room, there will be a voucher where guests can take a free local taxi, ride share, ride to and from downtown Twenty-Nine Palms. And additionally, our marketing approach has always been to celebrate and showcase the area, not just Uvland Escalante. On the right, you can see our Instagram feed right now. There are three pictures, three of the six that are up and running, and there are three of the six encouraging people to visit Escalante and showing off the beauty and wonder of Southern Utah. Previously, I had this slide of, hey, jobs should be around 30 to 40. But I wanted to dig into that and get that number from you. So I sat down with our management team, and we planned the actual number of jobs by department. You can see that on the left. And I also wanted to emphasize, our priority is to always hire local. We like to hire local experts in construction, third-party vendors, and operations. And I always say that hospitality can be taught, but local expertise has to be lived, has to be breathed, and experienced in an area over years. We also donate $10 every night to nonprofits centered around the conservation and preservation of the area. And then while very preliminary, we've had conversations with the school district and college about creating an internship, some sort of work program for students that are interested in learning more, experiencing what the hospitality industry is like. And now, taxes, taxes aren't, I guess, the most conventional form of community benefits. But where those dollars are invested, of course, benefit the community, whether that's in schools, or parks, or boys' and girls' club, or new roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And our budget is planning to generate over $800,000 in tax revenue across POC, sales, property tax, to the City of Twenty-Nine Palms every year once opened and operated. And I just want to end with this quote, it's a long quote, but I'm gonna read it. It's from the Garfield County Office of Tourism, which is the county that Escalante, or Uvland Escalante is located in. Uvland has been a great partner to Garfield County and a true asset to our community. Their commitment to responsible growth and support of local tourism efforts has made a meaningful impact. Uvland brings high-quality accommodations, unique visitor experiences, and meaningful job opportunities to the area, helping boost our local economy while enhancing the overall visitor experience. They consistently collaborated with the county to strengthen tourism, support small businesses, and celebrate the natural beauty of our region. It's been a pleasure working with a team that understands the value of community partnerships and shares our vision for thoughtful, long-term tourism development. And that commitment, and that collaboration, is what Twenty-Nine Palms can expect from Uvland. And that is all I have. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
How cool? As you can see, turn it on, right? So please, say your two minutes, we can get this today and happy night, into morning. If you kind of, someone speaks the sensationally you're ready to say, if you want to pass, just let me know about it. You have your two minutes, you know what you're doing, while you're doing it. Also, like I said, kindly, please start tuning, and are you ready? I have these out, this is all good, we're still not, so don't have an idea all of a sudden, and then try to speak in here, can sit, right? Just please. Everyone knows that's a pretty important, let me see. All right, you ready? Clyde Turner? Oh, sorry, I don't know how it's still up. Hold it up here. All right, Clyde Turner? One more, am I saying it right? Yep, I need to say it right. I'll put it here, it's a paper. Also, up here, your full name and address, please, just, I'll make sure it's all documented well correctly. Mary Tenny? Mary Tenny, I thought it was her. I'll fill the buffer, I'm gonna give you a real. Play it again.
Do you need an announcer?
Do you need an announcer?
Mary Tenny, 65, 28, and 77. That was a great presentation, it sounded like a wonderful project. But what I'm hoping for is if you acknowledge this plan without EIR. Don't set precedent for other projects. With this being five miles from Twenty-Nine Palms and nine miles from Joshua Tree, do you think it is reasonable, all the Uvland Twenty-Nine Palms? This plan sounds good, but people have cars and naked shoes. So I'm sure, like you said, some of the 29, but I think that we're gonna have some fallout to the other, to the western area. And especially on gas, and when we make a camera, we're gonna go that way, one of them might go to the west. So, I don't think, also the project So, um, I don't think, also, the project is going to be self-sufficient with all that they are holding. With that, with the RIN and the resetters opening, please consider, this might be too much with all of our other local resources.
Thank you. Clyde Turner? Yeah? All right. Scott Junior?
Good afternoon. I have not had my way to speak to Luke and Josh very quite well. Fantastic presentation this evening. I say we pass it right now. Obviously for it, I'm a representative of all of you. I'm a real estate broker. I control the property on the northeast corner. It's two parcels. The first parcel is about three acres, about 15 acres, also a residential, two and a half. It's not proper zoning for those quarters. Their, their project, conserving 106 acres is just amazing. We should jump that. He's a very big proponent for 29. He's, I've seen him Starbucks in the morning, talking to a lot of people at Starbucks in the morning. They're usually five days a week, their visitors to Joshua Creek and 29 Palms. I asked him where they're from. Many from out of the country. One, one couple was cute. She was from Germany. He was from San Francisco. They were complaining it was too expensive at 29 Palms. I found that funny from me from San Francisco. It's great property, the conservation, the care of the neighborhood, the care for the city, the push of 29 Palms from their, their heart is great. The, I don't see any business not benefiting from this project from 29 Palms. As one person said, we're not going to get every single person, but with their outfield service looking forward, we have now, every, every business will benefit. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you for your service, very positive for the project. I'm all for it. I love the project. I don't see anything possible that we would get better than that for it. Thank you.
David Long, in La Guerra. Sign off on that.
Hello, my name is Hannah Lachlan, and I'm a local business owner and resident of Indian Cove. I'm here to voice my opposition to the Evelyn Resort in its current state. I believe it can and it can fit and benefit 29 Palms and the commercialized location in town. I have some talk concerns with this project, but we've heard them all and I think you're going to keep hearing them tonight. Experts have talked to numerous times about this project. What continues to sway me is the agitation and anger coming from other residents and even city officials into those of us speaking about our concerns. This is not a black or white subject. This is not an either-or subject. Would you rather have this or neighborhood? What we're talking about is a project presenting complex issues, environmental ramifications, that needs to be carefully questioned, controlled, and studied before decisions are made. Since the first presentation by Evelyn in November 23, when Luke, the representative from Evelyn, told the crowd he was going to divide and conquer, the residents of Indian Cove have been shut out of the conversation. Offered no seat at the table, no willingness to compromise, no benefits to our residents. We got as a nuisance and anti-choke movement and a nothing but not my backup attitude. We're, we're asking you to listen. We are asking you to hear our concerns because they are about, they're basically healthy and they deserve to be considered. I also like the city managers donating to their, for taking photos of our presentation. I gave that road group club last week, and I feel like he provided me the loot so he could give this riveting speech about all the points we have in this town. Thank you.
Melissa Bresi?
Bresi.
Yes.
My name is Melissa Bresi. I've been a full-time resident, homeowner in 29 Palms for a decade. When Evelyn had their first meeting with the people of 29, they were actually called Yonder. What do you do when everyone hates you? We change your name. Google Evelyn Tennessee to learn more. The name change was marketing rep lied with deceitfulness. If this was my friend and entering into a new relationship, I'd say run, girl, run. At that same meeting, when residents of 29 began to respectfully inquire on the project, Luke refused to take questions, instead instructing residents to various small peoples around the room because the plan was, in Luke's words, to divide and conquer us. And this continues. Evelyn's plan to divide us with the goal to conquer us. How can we believe anything Evelyn says if they are willing to shortchange our desert by not complying with the environmental processes, including the environmental impact report? How many red flags do we need to know we are in a toxic relationship? Ultimately, council, it would be up to you to slow down this process, slow down this relationship with this corporate developer, who quite frankly does not have a whole lot of strong evidence of success to that then. I ask you to consider your legacy. How will you leave 29 with irresponsible, short-sighted, reckless growth that decimates a rural neighborhood or thoughtful, intentional growth which protects our natural resources and the people of 29? What will be your legacy?
Travis Bosson?
Good evening. May for Travis. My name is Travis Bosson. I own a bakery in town and I also live in the neighborhood of Indian Cove. The facts are that this land where Evelyn desires to be was not mapped or designated for commercial or hospitality about under the city's existing general plan or zoning. So, for housing, it's quite simple, which means the, the plan would be that the new neighborhood would be adjoining the existing neighborhood if that was to happen at all. So, more relative, relatively at the same height, most pollution and auto emissions. When you drive by this, and I have to walk through dog eye, which we do every day, you could understand why a business specifically absorbed the thought of wanting to put itself here and conjoin itself to the existing community of Indian Cove. Residents who date back to as far as the 50s and 60s are still there and have done a heavy lifting to get this neighborhood where it is today. To me, this is an issue of heavy lifting, where an entity wants to sidestep the responsibility of building an aura all their own in this space that's all their own and wants to take a shortcut and go on off the residents who worked hard to create a tranquil oasis of their own. So, I'd like to encourage our city council to encourage, sorry, encourage not just Evelyn but all future commercial business opportunities to maybe directly to properly zone parcels so that we can get to the business of generating revenue for all permanent parties and avoid the nuisance of your citizens dating our precious time to try to write our problem, we didn't operate, thank you.
John LeLieu? John G? John G, the, looks like D I A R?
D I A R.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Hyer. I live in 6928 Old Dodo. Reason why I'm here is because I live right on the east side of the developing park. Our neighborhood executed a field visit, not official survey, provided no evidence to the being, to the being a U S F W S. Authorized biologic, biological for desert tortoises. A statute that required for somebody to execute a 100% protocol survey for desert tortoises. The proposed mitigation, 100% protocol survey of U S F W S, 29 Palms, is not mitigation. It is a part of a biological assessment for construction projects. It provides information and consultation with the U S F W S and the C D F W. This survey has not been executed. This survey has not been able to move tortoises without consulting and authorization by the U S F W S and C D F W. Doing so would be a violation of the Indigent Species Act, vice California D S A. The biological assessment indicated for California via California Animalization University database, the C N, C N D D B, that records up tortoises less than two miles north of Evelyn's property. The C N D D B habitat assessment also indicates the target area is a desert, desert tortoise habitat. I have a desert tortoise sitting on my property. And he's been there ever since I've been here, like real, but damn. This gentleman, please, our, our casino here did everything right. I see it the last two weeks I've been too. All this is being done, is being pushed through. I would see that this company back here is going to make sure that this town is $800,000. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Paulski?
I'm Paul Stine, live in Indian Cove. I have been asked the city council to return this project to the planning commission for further review in light of the issues raised and unanswered after the committee meeting and to require an E I R. If the project goes forward, 29 Palms residents need to know that there are no hidden environmental, financial, or legal problems that will come back to harm us, that there are shore bonds in place to protect the city if the project is abandoned or sold, that there will be independent oversight during and after construction, and that federal and state authorities will be consulted before construction. Every effort should be made to ensure the project, if approved, proceeds through the best interest of the residents of 29 Palms up to the forefront. Right now, it is unclear that this is the case. As the Psalm warns, no paying tariffs to put up the parking lot, or in this case, in quest for tax revenue, don't destroy what makes 29 Palms special. Thank you.
That's action.
My name is Greg Anderson. I live in 29 Palms. We live in Desert Heights. Regarding the Awlon project having recently been approved by the planning commission, I have two misgivings to present to the council members. Number one, for a project this large, it is unheard of that an environmental impact report would not be conducted. An E I R must be completed by an independent third party. There are several qualifying arguments for why, however, most important to me is that the area between Duryface 29 Palms up to the border of the national park nearest to the neighborhood of Indian Cove is a major wildlife corridor. So, while the rest of the world is getting busy planning and constructing wildlife corridors, 29 Palms will be moving backwards fast. Number two, the alleged monetary rainfall for 29 Palms will derive from the Awlon Resorts wealthy clientele is pure 100% bull. I have spoken with the treasurer's office in the small town of Escalante, Utah, where Awlon Escalante is located. The money equals pretty much a big fat zero. I talked to them the day before yesterday. Awlon's customers may not leave the Awlon site. Awlon provides, and that is it.
Jumper? Jumper?
Good evening, council members. I'm here to express my concerns with the mitigated negative declaration for the Evelyn Hotel project. Terranova, resulting completed the environmental study for Evelyn, who provided consultation services to the city for this project. While the city has indicated this action is legally permissible, it raises ethical concerns and may represent a potential conflict of interest. Situation presents concerns related to impartiality, objectivity, and the potential appearance of enterprise. As residents in the city, this erodes my confidence. I call it Watson handbags. If Evelyn cares about the environment and the community like they claim, they should help them in an independent, unbiased E I R by an outside contractor. The mitigated negative declaration the city accepted is both flaws and problems that we address. An E I R promotes transparency, addresses neighborhood concerns, and builds trust with the community. I'm requesting that you, as the council members, send the Evelyn project back to the planning commission for further review. Thank you.
Hi, Dar.
Good evening. Hi, Dar. I'm living in Indian Cove. I'm asking that the city council do the right thing and not cut any corners by rushing this project through. An E I R is needed for this project as the initial study is hold airs. Many experts have submitted facts that contradict the study. This project needs to return to plan and direction to take the time to open up the general plan. Rushing this project through, as is being presented, is putting the city and its residents at risk of litigation. The effects that spot zoning will have on the city will be disastrous. This project belongs in a commercial zone. It's time for 29 Palms to start being proactive versus reactive to developers. Neighborhood characteristics and quality of life of residents in those neighborhoods needs to be a priority. Establish policy first. Stop letting developers think they get to decide what's best for our city. Stop falling for the smooth-talking, used car salesmen, i.e. developers, who will say anything to get what they want. Remember, the goal of the city manager is to advise, not lobby the city council. Give it to your council and for those of us that elected council. Protect our rural neighborhoods. We have a housing crisis, not a reform crisis.
Jim Prusia?
Thank you, Jim Prusia. This is Q25, future drive, 29 Palms, South Corne. The city of 29 Palms needs this project for the 29. The city of 29 Palms needs this project for the opportunities of tax revenue and the promotion of tourism, which we have always wanted as part of our city's economic development. As the planning commission identified with diligence, I reviewed all material to include emails that I submitted to the city planning department and based my decision on merits of the project, my knowledge of 29 Palms, and our present economic conditions. I attended the Morongu Basin Conservation Association meeting on May 31st entitled "Planning Planes." I was the only city official there. I went expecting a genuine conversation about how our community might thoughtfully manage growth and preservation together. What I found instead was a one-sided opposition, idi and all development, specific to the Awlon project. Every speaker spoke against the project. Toward the end, one participant finally asked a critical question. You've heard what you're against, but what kind of development would you support since the tourists are coming? The room fell silent. Eventually, somebody offered, "Well, just happy to have a meeting on that subject." They added development concepts or proposals. It will not matter how many additional conditions we put on this project, nothing is ever to be satisfied by a special interest group. This 152 acre parcel of land on east of established neighborhood has remained undeveloped since the incorporation into the city of 29 Palms 77 years ago. Now, proposal, the Awlon project, is finally under consideration. Some voices insist it's a threat to their community despite the fact that the project is not within any existing neighborhood, no handle, main issues are involved, and no one is losing their home. What is happening is thoughtful planning, the proposal includes a large upper zone soon to be designated open space conservation, ensuring that no residences will abut the resort itself. Development does not mean destruction. It means opportunity, jobs, local growth, and managed access to natural beauty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Edward?
Howard, you're sir. Um, you know, I said to you, it was a little hesitant to give you a statement because you said, didn't understand why I knew what I'm saying. And for Mr. Puscha, just a moment, you know, said something about, "Oh, you're first putting, hey, you know, I've got some comments," or whatever, you just did. You know, I guess...
Sir?
Oh, that comes back. I don't know. Okay, okay. Well, so anyways, as I'm saying, uh, I think the responsible, ethical thing to do, as per the ICMA or IMA that's on Dr. Stone's website, is consider both parts of the issue. Uh, we have people watching PC, watching, watching this right now, and people coming in on Friday. There will be a press conference at the front one of the closeout writings tomorrow in Mason. I, I, I am 29, I always have that. We did the Good Neighbor class. We did a CTE thing for the college, I did an internship for a program. But I guess since we suffered a loss, I guess I can count on you, I can put in my, right? So, yeah, I'm leading, I'm seeking political silence in the upper valley. Uh, all I have to say is that I'm here for, uh, you know, the ethics groups that are in terms of speaking with this. Thank you so much. I support 29 Palms.
Thank you. Steve Bartle?
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Bartle. I am the president of the Morongu Basin Conservation Association, which is based in Goshawk Tree. The Morongu, MTC is supportive of the creation of a new open space conservation use. We look forward to seeing more appropriate land being served as a median. We appreciate the efforts to create above or around the project to create open space. We also appreciate the potential economic benefits to the city and the need for more accommodations for park visitors. However, with the ongoing exchange in prices and the decline of wildlife in the natural world, and nearly 70% decline in the last 50 years, we believe this project is missing an opportunity. The site plan proposed is a dominant-shaped configuration that approach, this approach greets the open space by the edge effect. The edge effect is represented by the red jagged lines from roadways and development on the open space. A preferred plan would be to consolidate the open space and a separate portion of the site closer to the national park. This would facilitate accessing, access closer to Highway 62 and provide no disturbance to the open space and minimize its impact on the neighborhood. The current plan proposes access roads within the open space zone. Roads are not approved use and would require the variance to permit their place to be in command use. MDA is not, MTC is not in support of adopting the MND for this project and as it is desired. And believe in more detailed environmental analysis is needed, so...
So, Dr. Cole?
Yes, I've assessed the Awlon business owner here in 29 Palms for over 30 years. Now, I'm here to support this project. Now, I encourage others to support this project. 29 Palms is in need of development, in need of jobs, in need of revenue. They have a homeless here, they have a ladder. If we're here then, I can't really afford to live in 29 Palms, and this development will help provide jobs and resources, and that tourism that comes along with that will have to save the 29 Palms and its residents. We have to look at the big picture here as far as the development of 29 Palms. Like I said, I've been here for over 30 years and I've seen a lot of opportunities that have come to 29 Palms that were not accepted by the residents of 29 Palms. Therefore, I'm most certain that the upper valley, uh, for development, that a lot of those opportunities came in 29 Palms first. When I first got here, 29 Palms was much bigger than the upper valley and jobs were true. But if you look at the development of 29 Palms and how 29 Palms is today, it's because of the stances of the residents in 29 Palms that were against development, against improvement. But yet, still, they go to the upper valley shop and Walmart, malls, all the other places that they need here in 29 Palms. We need restaurants, we need places to live and make you go. I know my kids were born up here, resources were not available for my kids because 29 Palms didn't have here in the city. So, we need those days. We have to find a way to embrace development that is beneficial to all and not just sectors or derivatives for those that already have. The idea is that we need this development, so if we continue to lower the development, we should lower our, lower our square development rate swing.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luca Parks, and my address is 6276 Moles Hall Road. To give all contacts that I do my own, I'm a father of four daughters, ages 4, 14, 19, and 26. And house number to my beautiful wife, Nicole. I worked in education for over 26 years, and I've worked at Morongu by specifically tenders as working with students with visual impairment. We proudly call this community home since 2001. I share this conduct because understanding someone's background doesn't make sense to be respected. Now, help the Awlon project. I believe we shall be working towards probabilities and certainties that ensure long-term growth and opportunity for our community. In our community, there's often bill over air. Some good people rise and thrive, others feel like, um, generational poverty and never laid manable, never get a chance to reach their potential. If anyone wants to truly understand that and spend a day with me or my wife, it's to be my students at 29 Palms Elementary School. I support the Awlon project for two main reasons. There's the probability of cert or certification that would become the third largest employer in the area after the school district and the middle three. And quite frankly, we need jobs. Secondly, there's the probability of your certification, the Awlon project will showcase the value of our community and provide that economic growth. Lastly, as I think about what kind of future we're planning, I think of something my beautiful wife carries with her every day. She has a tattoo surrounded by seven bars that says, "Blue for your planet." I believe the Awlon project will be a blue planet to nurture and honor the children of the many generations. Um, thank you.
Tony Drew?
Hello, my name is Tonya Jones. I'm a longtime resident of 29 Palms, that councilor in Indian Cove group. So, the city's general plan, there is legal backlog of MDA decisions, and our strongly exist reservable character instincts. This was to protect the desert environment and to support developing best and viable existing neighborhoods. And approving the CUP for this resort directly by the municipal's and also thus so on the land as long as initial. So, we've been told that this project will bring $800,000 of TLT revenue, but that favorite complement applicant would have an independent review and public study, cost fit analysis, and accounting for its potential tax revenue. And levels of access will cost the rest of us in infrastructure trade and city resources, laws, trust, any potential legal worries and tax revenue dollars to see what challenges emerge, which is not a situation they want to do. And when things are rushed to do like this, and also rushed, and then we'll spot something. Um, and that's including that MDA that is being attended, be rushed through. I also just want to speak to the mission and those people about or how the concerns are raised, and that being used as a tactic to shame and silence people instead of just truly being able to talk about and address these issues that we're bringing up. And just to be clear, I am not an entire developer, I'm not an entire group, just as any other people, uh, that I'm here and are, but I 100% support a total development that belongs to the city's general plan and its own codes. And regarding hotels and resorts specifically, we were raised in examples of the Dunn Transport Avenue, Wally, and Carrie, like the reset hotel, which was supported by many residents. So, that is what is being asked for right now. So, as the JUPES Councilships Group, send it back to the committee. Thank you for your time and attention.
Ilona Westman?
Okay, my name is Ilona Westman, and I strongly support this project. Whether I leave or stay in the area, I hope to never see the outer highway in Indian Cove return to a failing, rundown, backwater, ice core, lacking vision, the way I found it 25 years ago before some of us acquired our sights. Not that it's so great now, but in my humble opinion, the best idea to prevent that from happening again would be to add something to the area like a plane resort, such as the Awlon Resort, not take something away from the area, like money. I'd like to sell my big building in Indian Cove, but my heart is there and I live close by and I meditate in the area. Now, looking at the safety issue, the traffic line at Lear has greatly reduced internal accidents at that location, and the city's plan to extend Lear out of this problem would be another safety benefit as turning off the narrow lane of the outer highway from Lear is not a good option for most people. The other turn-ins from the highway are even more hazardous. I once fixed off with a tank that was trying to cross the Long Vista intersection in the middle lane. It felt like a bagging of chicken. So, as the Awlon people have agreed to extend Lear for the city, let them get started as soon as possible. Of course, a few locals would like to keep Indian Cove campground a big secret, and they want the surrounding area to be kept as is in perpetuity. Well, I did it. They like Alba Room, who doesn't? That's precisely why tourists are coming here, coming to enjoy nature, not to trial it. As a matter of fact, city swickers are probably better at picking up after your dogs, sorry. So, why not share the beauty of the land and the sky with them? After all, common people are hoping to experience it. Also...
Liz Hyer?
Good evening, city council people. I am one of many long-term residents of 29 Palms. Those that work to achieve the cityhood in its first place, and those who always had an interest in the development of the city. We're not organized, but collectively we know this community. We have learned that as much as we would like to see balanced growth, it cannot happen without outside investors seeing our potential. They are the ones that bring in support for infrastructure, jobs, and hotels, bring in significant TOT for the city. I have studied the Awlon Hotel proposal, and we're at most of the staff report. This is not just another Marriott Pirates coming to town. The Awlon Resort proposes a hospitality experience that is genuinely in harmony with 29 Palms' unique desert character. The design, including its conservation buffer and proposed dark sky lighting, demonstrates a commitment to being a good neighbor and respecting our national, our natural environment. The initial study correctly recommends a mitigated negative declaration. In the staff report, every one of the concerns raised is thoroughly evaluated and addressed, and EIR would be required only if those impacts were not significant to be mitigated. That is not the case here. Instead, the additional time and expense for the developers to make an EIR would most likely kill this project. Many here tonight are asking for that EIR just for this purpose. This project promises significant economic benefits and enhanced visitor experience, while demonstrating a commitment to the community. To lose this project would be most regretful.
Thank you. Mr. LaRue? You're up?
I have a charger, I'm not very good.
All right. Jeffrey Dunn?
I have a charger. Uh, Jeff Gunn, Sherman Road, and Falls. I don't know who I'm here for, but, uh, thank you for your service, for the opportunity to do that, and to thank your city and your, uh, planning commission members that are really helping and, uh, volunteers, I just want to know, I appreciate it. I've been in town a long time, uh, all but seven years of my life, and, um, I'm a little lonely living here a long time. Remember, we didn't have any stoplights at all. This is a red flash. I own two properties, apartment, two properties within a quarter mile project. One of the courses is directly adjacent to it. The house that we live in is about a mile away. I'm in favor of what? I'm concerned about the sustainability of our town. Uh, I've seen good days and bad days over the years, and I'm concerned. And takes a project like this to get visitors and to provide jobs, for us to be able to have the police protection that we need, the parks that we need, things for kids to do, road improvement, um, that's the main concern. That's the main concern. I'm very happy with this project. Twenty-eight percent of the land is going to be used, open space for the rest. I mean, that formula just makes so much sense to me. I know that we're not going to have sixty houses built on two and a half acres in the next five years, but we may have that happen in the next ten, twenty, or fifty. And that's it.
Thank you. Liz Meyer.
Yeah.
Tom Sars, Ken Cross.
I've lived here for sixty years, that's less than jail. I think people that follow the rules and requirements should be able to do their projects, especially since the state just changed two days ago, passed a new law, does away with lease equal requirements. It also opens up for bonus density. As a former builder, I can tell you that takes up seventy-five weeks to two-hundred-and-twenty-five. That's your bonus density. Plus, high-rise buildings are about, no matter what the city's ordinance or whatever they say, it's on the news, you read in the paper. We're a place where property values are just right for these kinds of developments, just like that man was a few years ago. He even got called by a former city manager to tell us how terrible it was to live. Years ago, as the city council, we realized tourism was our future. We had one million visitors in the National Park, then now it's only three million, three and a half million, so smart car, but. Offland is making a big investment, 29 Palms, we go for that, and put out our crappy product. The city's council did not decide what businesses are allowed based on what they say. Oh, listen to me, a little emotional. Based on what they sell. We control restaurants. Oh, there's too many restaurants. No, the one that does the best gets the business. That's how life is in this.
That's right.
And anyways, it's about the internet. They have a little place between here and Joshua Tree, it's always crowded, I don't even know what the neighborhood is, there's no signs. It's all about the internet. This is a small-scale project, and they are developing one-third of area instead of the whole area. There are approximately sixteen and seventeen thousand residents living in 29 Palms, and what is that, a hundred and fifty here for this third shadowy. I know that people don't want to have to worry about it, I get that, but you know, 29 Palms is 29 Palms, it's not just Indian Cove, it's not just San San Trac, Southern Water State, 29 Palms. And I agree, they should recall, what the heck, they didn't recall anyway. Good job.
Martin.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Liz and Jeff have been here longer than I have, and I've been here longer than you. I've been a 29 Palms resident for sixty-five years, and I'm a current resident that was in Indian Cove, New York. 29 Palms has long declared itself a tourist area, are marked with development plans and are focused on tourism and related projects for the last fifty years. This is logical, given our immediate proximity to Joshua Tree National Park. Tourism is largely a clean industry that brings jobs and encourages local investment and public partnership. Tourism has bolstered our local economy when outside factors, threats, like the Gulf War, COVID, et cetera. Visitation numbers provided by the Joshua Tree National Park and the high occupancy rates of our hotels are evidence for the steady increasing numbers in our area. In short, tourism is good for our local economy. When projects outside tourism have been proposed, prison, call center, ashtray, et cetera, we have a circus set known to the industry. The general sentiments seem to be this is a tourist area, we must protect it regardless if people want to do it. We go there. I have no financial interest in this project, I have not, and will not play a role in this development. None of my family has any involvement in this project. I am expressing my support because my considered opinion is a type of project that makes sense for 29 Palms. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Ryan.
Good evening. I'm only been here twenty-three years. The city's general plan vision statement promises its residents that community activities should adapt to the natural environment, rather than the natural environment being changed or adapted to these activities, and that the city will encourage high-quality development compatible with the missions of the Joshua Tree National Park and the Marine Corps Base. The general plan value principles amplify the vision promising to promote high quality of life while preserving the city's desert small-town feel, encourage high-quality development compatible with the National Park and Marine Corps Base and the city's desert small-town character, preserve the desert environment and its natural and cultural resources for future generations, and promote sustainable and adaptable work principles in the development of the city. The offland project as described with its density, amenities, and activities is its own small town, destroying the natural gateway into and out of the National Park for wildlife visitors and residents. A mission for both the park and Marine Base is to maintain the natural biodiversity within the locations, which cannot be achieved if they become islands, hence the wildlife corridor within which is the proposed offland project that connects the two landscapes, providing both live-in and passive opportunities for animals and plants, including the resident and danger desert tourists. You should see the general plan conservation element with the C O's through your map. The project should not go forward without an E I R to inform us of all the impacts to the desert environment, the National Park, and Marine Base which run the networks in the city. Considering the project's scope, we have public the project transparency. We, the participating in public, want to know during this decision-making project how these impacts can be reduced or avoided.
Thank you. Lauren Wilker.
Hi, I'm Lauren Wilker. Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Lauren Wilker, and I'm a Rockaway Basin resident, although I am not resident of 29 Palms. I'm here tonight because this project does just affect one city. This sets a precedent for our entire region. The Rockaway Basin is growing, tourism is growing, and we're going to continue to see development like this, we have been seeing development like this, and we all stand to benefit from responsible economic development. But a project of this size, only half a mile from Joshua Tree National Park, and within a major wildlife corridor with endangered species, absolutely warrants an E I R. The mitigated negative declaration is not efficient, it relies on biased consultants and ignores concerns that have been raised by experts like the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and District Tours Council. Again, please, this really impacts our entire region. I urge you to require an independent E I R, work with California environmental agencies, and refer this back to the planning commission.
Thank you. Kim Ko.
Kim Ko, fifty years resident, and wonderful man, he's been a good job. You know, it's interesting, I sat back, I listened to several people that I followed onto the city council when I went back to college, and there's years and years of involvement in this community centered around making this a better place. And I think that somebody said, and those people get up and say, hey, we have experience of looking at such projects, and looking at them critically, and then saying this is what gives 29 Palms. And I'm one of those people too. I've spoken with Palms on the project, I've spoken with the neighbors to the project, I've spoken with people just a little while, what's best for the future of 29 Palms, and I've been hearing all these things, think that critically, you know, I'm a favorite of the project. Over the course of nine years in the city council, and twelve years working for the city, I engaged with many residents on the project, but also engaged with many residents that said, hey, we need someplace, we need some industry here in 29 Palms for our kids to be able to stay here, not have to go somewhere else to live and work. And tourism has evolved as one of those industries that seems to be working here and growing here. And this is an example of that, but also saying no to a project like this is saying no to other projects in the city that rely on tourism. My son is able to come back here and start two businesses with his own, relying on tourism to succeed. And saying no to this project is saying no to businesses like that as well. So I want to express my support of this project, and thank you, thank you.
Pat Meinger. No, you're right, I guess.
How's it going, everybody? Can you hear me? First off, I'm in charge. I mean, I have a unique perspective, I'm a developer of reset hotels, so I'm not, you know, a resident in the code. And Luke, I really don't need work. See, right now, I'm just seeing this. I just want to say, I don't need anything, I'd like ten people. This narrative that the city and the residents are against development, not what I see. I've seen the city be very critical about it, I've spoken to a city bunch of others, people give their thoughts on how we should do things, what we should do, and there were like ten, twelve people, no one here was ever here. It was tiny, it was the city awful. Anyway, I'm here to say, I don't think that anyone here is no to awful. I think people want to see tourism, they want to see awful. They want to see it on commercial land. I think you really need to distinguish that. Like, I know the jobs are coming, the T O Ts are coming, our T O Ts alone, which are going to start today, which is starting to be learning, but that's going to be like a two to three million dollar bomb the same once. Really good use of that would be reinvesting it into more commercial land, through a general plan amendment. With the general plan amendment, the city residents get to contribute, there's workshops, people talk about what areas should be developed. So I keep hearing this fight, this everyone hates the development, but this, like, I think a lot of people would love to see, I think everyone here is just awful, everybody in here is just awful, on commercial land, there are yes hotels, on commercial land, there are yes more commercial land, they know that that means the outcome, but I think they're no to developments on rural residential land. This whole also argument that there's like seventy years no one's been developing, you could take the map of 29 Palms and turn the whole thing to commercial with that argument, because there's so many baking parcels that are 2.5, seventy years haven't been developed. I wouldn't, don't do that just because no one's involved in it. I, I'm just like, anyway, yes, awful.
Seven one.
Good evening, mayor, council members, fellow residents. My name is Sandra Claus, local business owner, and I stand for you tonight with strong support of the offland development project. 29 Palms is growing, whether we embrace it or not, families are moving, businesses are exploring new opportunities, and our proximity to Joshua Tree National Park and the Marine Corps Base continues to bring people toward it mainly. Sorry. If we do not plan and allow for intentional growth now, we risk falling behind, unprepared for increasing demand on our local infrastructure, housing, and services. The offland project is more than just a development, it's an investment in our future. It will create a bunch of needed jobs for our residents, from construction to hospitality and retail and maintenance. At a time when many communities are facing for economic downturns, this project offers the stability, opportunity, and a path forward. Offland will bring valuable resources and amenities that are currently lacking in our area, resources that will enhance the quality of life for our residents and attract additional responsible growth. Saying yes to this project is saying yes to our city's long-term economic health. We must be proactive. If we do not act now and support thoughtful, sustainable development, we will find ourselves surrounded with a catch-up litter. Without the infrastructure, jobs, or services needed to support our rural population, let's position 29 Palms for success. Let's support offland. Thank you.
I know this is a classic, NJ Fiofo, Fiofo? Fiofo? Okay.
Hello. Good evening. I'm NJ Fiofo, I'm a resident of 29 Palms. I support responsible tourism development. However, the oil plant resort document contains so many errors that it doesn't rate the free gas from a responsible environment here. The planning commission record contains more than two-hundred-and-fifty pages outlining the flaws that we identified by state, collective, and private sector experts. The waiver document should be returned to the planning commission for further work. The council also should instruct the planning commission to create the Commensal Action, a comprehensive policy on resort development, so that residents of 29 Palms will know their rights and what requirements will be imposed on all flood and any other resorts that follow us. The city's notice and writing ordinance is also need to be updated for this kind of development. In addition, the council should note that any resort showing changes to offland only, offland should not be allowed to sell these changes to any third party. It should instruct the planning commission to grant request by federal and state authorities for consultation before construction, as well as require that the oversight of resort development and construction be provided by an independent third party with no ties to offland, which I know. The number of offland cabins should be reduced to sixty-one, and finally, no off-road vehicles or e-bikes should be allowed since there are no authorized trails where they could operate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Martin Moon Ton.
Hi, I'm John. I made my sign, some beautiful person, look. Pat, I'm Laura, and I am a homeowner in Indian Cove, and yes, you know, I have been here for many five years, or anything like that, but we live here now, and I'm here now, and I just wanted to say that I believe that offland should be relocated to a commercial property, not in my neighborhood where I enjoy walking with my friends and jogging and seeing our dogs and enjoying each other in residential neighborhood that was wrong for residents. I'm not, you know, getting up all kinds of great quotes and facts, just please, do your due diligence, be the people that you claim to be being a resident for a hundred years, do your diligence. Do you want to just have this be put up without doing the proper steps and protocols? I'm just asking, do what is right for all of us here. And like the sun says, do not beat the paradise to put up a parking lot, and love it, there's a taxi driving around with it, or the sins, they're crying for it. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Don Calli.
Hi, John Calli Jones, a little bit west of Indian Cove. I agree with the city council to review the development proposal to see planning for a more thorough review. My concerns here do not address whether the project is good or bad, that is irrelevant to my argument. Instead, I want to know your regularities to the city's handling of proposal. Last month, the planning commission... Last month, the planning commission voted to recommend approval. This was after the chair was misled to believe that there could be a more careful review later. The vote was therefore removed. The chair should be allowed a proper review. Meanwhile, you have been presented with a packet that is 1,400 plus pages long. That is a lot of content, it's a lot to consider. I've sent to each of you an email that identifies seeming irregularities such as conflicts of interest, a flawed mitigated medical declaration that begs to be challenged in court of law, favoritism towards 29, zoning changes that go against the city's general plan, and the setting of precedent that could result in costly litigation. Wily urgency for approval. The transient occupancy tax of 29 Palms is several years away. Meanwhile, the Reset Hotel is now open and is expected to yield almost a half million dollars annually. It would seem that our financial crisis is about to evaporate. Please be prudent and return the proposal to city planning with instructions to consider revisions, address public concerns, and identify legal issues. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take the shortcut route, sorry. Hi, this is Nadia, I'm 69711, 29 Palms Highway. And like many people in this room, I've got the woman who shares half mile property board with this parcel. Uh, my family bought that parcel around 61, we've been here for about 65 years. My grandfather also helped build this city quite quickly. Anyway, I'm concerned the 29 Palms project is being rushed through the approval process without considering the long-term consequences of spots and rain, and the lapse of policy governing where resorts should be located. This complex project is moving more quickly than any project in recent memory. I'm not against development growth, Stone. I'm not against development and growth council. I believe that commercial development should take place in the appropriate zoning, and I welcome the 29 Palms project in commercial zoning. However, we are all aware this city could use more commercial zoning. But the right way to handle this, as I've been saying for some time now, is to open up the general plan and work together as a community to envision where more hotels and other businesses might be built. I understand that's an intensive process. I've also been told that Reset's guest U.K. wasted $200,000 in GOT dispositions if the city's budget projections show reduced GOTs, so I don't think that was reflected. Use the Reset GOT to buy the time to wish out planning in that. You're probably thinking, that takes too long. You know what else takes a long time? Litigation. Let's be very clear, approving 29 Palms project today as it stands at the city at risk for illegal action environmental organizations and movements. All we're asking for is an organized process governed by consistent policy. I recommend you defer the decision on offland tonight and have us about a plan with instructions to be able to work on the general plan. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Zana Graves. Let's hear it.
Good evening, my name is Zana Graves, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Center for Biology Diversity and on topic, Public Interest, environmental organization dedicated to the protection of species and their habitats. The council should not adopt the annual study mitigated medical declaration for this project tonight. Under CPO, a full environmental impact report is required because there is substantial evidence submitted by the center and by residents and state agencies, putting up their argument that this project may have significant environmental impacts. The site provides suitable habitat for multiple state and federally protected species, including the desert tortoise, goring owl, American red-ray, and long-tailed shrimp. These species are likely present in the project's site and have been documented nearby. Among other impacts, the project could destroy and degrade the habitat and introduce noise and light pollution and increase the risk of lethal threats. The site also lies within a critical wildlife corridor known as the Joshua Tree 29 Palms connection, linking the national park to unmet all demands of the 29 Palms too. As a result, this project will disrupt wildlife movement through this corridor, contributing to habitat fragmentation and impairing the species' ability to eat, migrate, and reproduce. Beyond biological impacts, the MNT fails as an informational document. It overlooks noise impacts on wildlife, ignores impacts from the proposed base tower treatment plant, and contains no water supply system. It also sets vehicle limits traveled by misguiding the project as mobile survey despite its pure intent to attract uptown visitors and host events. Bad mission masks, additional virus masks, air quality, water and traffic impacts, depriving the public for its generalization. You, thank you.
Asher Berisik.
Hello, my name's Asher Berisik. I'm a resident next door in Yucca Valley, and I care deeply about this area, and I also have a community ally with Ikea of the lab. I decided to come out tonight to urge you to oppose the 29 Palms project until an appropriate study of traffic impacts is conducted. The project before you is a 100-room luxury resort with land units. I'm concerned that outdoor impacts were not appropriately studied or gathered because the developer claims in a luxury resort that includes land units is local survey rather than a regional resort that will generate new trips and traffic in the city. For that reason, Caltrans has urged the city to conduct a more robust VMT analysis stating that higher landing facilities are generating new trips rather than substituting for existing travel. A full VMT analysis warranted, including consideration of all physical navigation measures. This project, built, will be with us for many years. I firmly believe we must be right. Now, given the full VMT studies seem potentially consistent with what the city did for the Modern Hotel project, which required a VMT study, even though it's closer to the city center and on commercial land. Here, the developer is asking for regional rural residential land for tourist commercial, yet we have no VMT study. Please do not look forward to this project without a full VMT study. Thank you for your time.
One last question, Jordan Sissi. Anyone else? Alright.
Good evening, Jordan Sissi, I'm a manager, supporting, representing, representing Mayor of Atlanta. Um, I'm a client who asks for a manage. I just sit up to the director of the Bureau of Commerce and Analysis, including what I went into, a proper VMT study. As you heard earlier, there is a regular issue about VMT. Here, no VMT study is there. Why? Because they say it's all absurd. For all the reasons you're aware of, it's not absurd, it's a very important argument. It's clearly going to do standard fees. And why is it so important? Because you're not considering mitigation, and that's what's at stake. EII, the proper process, means mitigation. It's not, this is your work, it's about considering the effects and mitigating it, and that's what's been left out of the handling. Now, respectfully, responsible development, connecting on the level of regulation system, so what's your path to progress? Uh, to be clear, new superlives don't exist in this project. It's like a citizen MNT case. These are subject to a great blow pressure, which means that there's substantial evidence that the mitigated that or not mitigated that? You need to do an EII. Here, just on the VMT, you put tons of substantial evidence stating why this is not a legal subject. Look at it all, it's a resort in luxury property. Look up what the road traffic analysis consultant did for a rush to the project right there. At 10 unit land unit projects, the student house said that was out of the legal subject. This is 100 of my numbers. It's luxury, it's 23 facilities, there's mitigation at stake here. And that's what's at stake. When you guys can say, can you approve this? There's no chance, you don't have that. Please, scrub staff to do a proper analysis. With the VMT, you consider the other issues that you are, going to try to follow those. Thank you for your time, respectfully, Mayor.
Jim Lawless.
Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow residents. I purchased a place in, uh, East Coast about 13 years ago because it's all residential consulting. This is at the 29 Palms area for five and a half decades. I'm concerned about property values. And I wonder how many people in the council actually live in East Coast where they would be affected. The second thing I wanted to add is, about two weeks ago, I received a five-way flyer indicating that $800,000 was gonna come to the city 29 Palms revenue. I had numbers to talk about, but I don't think it's, uh, prime here. I think the planning commission should have done something about this two or three weeks ago. So I'll pass on that. The other thing I would like to say is, the figures you presented indicate 100% occupancy. I called around to various resorts, et cetera, including Marigot, and they said that they're at 100% occupancy. So what is unique about 29? There's gotta be more transparency in the numbers. Thank you very much.
Gary Knott.
Good evening, Mayor Bellerin, Councilmembers, and fellow residents. My name is Gary Knott, I'm a resident of 29 Palms at Set 4501, Soul River. I'm a homeowner and I'm employed by a local company, and I'm here today to voice my thoughts on the 29 Palms project. This isn't just a special project, it's about jobs, opportunity, and a long way to invest in our community. As someone who believes in the value of hard work and supporting local trades, I see this project as a chance to put our contractors, our electricians, and our homeowners toward not outside the city, but right here in 29 Palms. For too long, I was filtered within this area and had chase jobs at the town looking at Palm Springs, doing management of the local estates. This project brings the work home, and when we hire local, we keep employees serviceable in our community. My wish to access trails for my own job levels next decade, supporting our schools and investing in the future of our communities, for when we already have 40 to 50 jobs. I also believe this development is a smart, responsible step forward for talking about cabins at the Allen State and to visitors who want to experience our desert the right way, respectfully, sustainably, and in a way that enhances our economy. But some residents want to grow funding on their terms, I ask for aid in completing the upper level. We can be picky. Pro growth means embracing all kinds of growth, affordable housing, commercial development, and infrastructure. That should help cities diverse growth in 15 to 20% higher income gains. We should be a side of our potential, leading workers and families to show. Let's adopt bold, solid reforms and streamlined permits to welcome all the wealth, our city's future investment. Approving this project doesn't mean changing who we are, it means building on what makes 29 Palms special, community, craftsmanship, and opportunity. Let's put our equal work and move the city forward. Thank you.
DJ Droid.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm DJ Droid, head of the board on the handsome track. Uh, so me and my wife, uh, first moved out here back in 2020. Uh, got orders from the Rink Four. Uh, when you get orders out from the Rink Four, a lot of people say good luck, and they pray for you. Uh, we didn't really know what to expect when we came out here. Uh, when we got out here in 2020, uh, 29's the end yet, it definitely is. Uh, you get a lot of tourism out here for, from the park. Uh, a lot of people don't know about 29 Palms, uh, cause they stay in more towards Yucca, uh, Joshua Free, Palm Springs, cause that's where all, all the amenities are. Uh, this project, I think, it encourages growth, uh, not only in the town, in our schools, uh, and just in our small businesses that we have here. Uh, we got a lot of small business owners, uh, so we wanna back small, small businesses. Uh, but my wife and I have recently made the decision, we wanna, we wanna raise our family here in 29 Palms. Uh, so we wanna see that growth, uh, cause I want, I want my kids to have opportunities here, and I want my family to play here. Uh, so please take into consideration, uh, just the opportunity, uh, and the future potential that this town has. Thank you.
Thomas Saban.
My name is Thomas Saban, I live in Alabama, Seattle. Uh, very good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. Uh, I'm here to advocate for prioritizing local contractors in three projects. Uh, local contractors are investing in our community. We hire local people, we support local businesses, and take part in our work because we live here. Howltown burns often wind is low prices, but they cut corners and take profits away. We think our economy studies show local businesses keep 50% of the earnings saved. A local reference policy would ensure fair bidding, create jobs, and deliver quality projects for people who care about our home. Let's keep our economy strong by investing in our home. I'm a father of five, a buyer, and I have a 17-year-old, two 13-year-olds, four year old, and a career. My kids play Little League here in this town from softball, soccer, even table. We even have classes for the aquatic center. I'm also a contractor in the city too as well. And, uh, I mean, let's face it, builders close down, you know what I mean? All we have left is this park, but now we gotta go to a deeper, more capital stuff. I mean, it could have been here, right? So, I'm definitely supportive of growth, I'm definitely supportive of this town, and, uh, I think offland resort would be very good. Thank you.
Phil Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here in honor to appeal to speak in front of you. I'm here to stress the urgent need for commercial revenue in our city. I am supporting this project. Relying on property taxes from citizens and homeowners to fund public services, it's unsustainable. Homeowners are stretched thin, and rising costs for police, fire, and schools are straining budgets. Commercial revenue through new businesses, retail, and tourism can ease this burden for all of us. Studies show that cities with diverse revenue streams reduce property tax reliance of its citizens by 30%. More shops, hotels, and restaurants need more jobs instead of income for our city without overtaxing its residents. With streamlined permits and upper incentives to attract businesses to our areas, our city's financial health depends on it, and I read what they quote from the Song of My Own, "This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York Islands, from the Red Bull Forest to the Gulf Stream waters, this land is mine for you and me." Let's make this town do its potential together. Thank you.
One last time, Flyker. Break it up a little bit. Break it up slowly. Yeah, it's all over here on the loose. Easy wise, we need to get to the last. Do you say that for me? I will when I say it. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Chris Saisets. I live in Twenty Nine Palms out here. Directly in our viewpoint would be where our land appears. I did want to touch upon some of the points that my esteemed wife Kimberly talked to a couple of you about, so building and of course, okay, it's good to see you guys. The major points she had were that the MND violates sequelous biological resource requirements. So I think we should keep that in mind moving forward. The second point she made is that the project threatens a critical state recognized wildlife linkage. And that corridor, once we land a project like this, is coming. So we want to keep that in mind. The MND omits known impacts to protected and endangered species, including the burrowing owl and the tortoise those mentioned earlier. And I mean, a lot of people have talked about that tonight, and I think we should just really take it into account that this will bring impending lawsuits. There are people who already said that they're willing to go forward and do it. So let's just take them. We're all human beings, everyone in this room. We're all benefiting from being able to talk about it. We depend upon the land around us. And yes, the revenue is good for the city, but let's put it somewhere else. Let's put it somewhere where it doesn't have such a big impact on the very environment that we live in. Really appreciate you all being here. Thanks for listening.
James Austin?
Hello, everybody. I'm the city council. I'm here. Glad to be here with you tonight. I'm fairly new to this town. Just kidding, I think this is nineteen eighty eight. Turned the grid board for twenty two years, and I'm a little business owner. I'm a little business owner in here. My business was in Indian Cove, right at the bottom of Bluefield of Indian Cove, and I do support offline. I have this on two mile road as well. We had ice truck. What we need most in this town, always, I'm fifty, and most people I want to be here that's saying, no, look at our children. What do our children need in this town? It's been a very long time since you had opportunity to sell. We got to go all the way to Palm Springs to give them our money. We heard from people from Yuck Valley today that saying, okay, we don't pay this year. They know the duck about. They got everything. When are we going to have our opportunity to have something? If offline goes away, who would have said somebody else would come here and support? We never know that. We don't have a goal. I didn't know what, when they were saying the EIR wouldn't admit that first, and I better have one the week, but as we look at it today, a lot of studies and empirics, nobody had a global whether offline give up eight hundred thousand dollars if they gave up two hundred thousand dollars. And if you remember, there's nothing this town had. We need to think real hard, and we do put up to you, sorry to give you so much pressure, but we put this up to you, and everybody in here had opportunity to be on council, but they didn't grow, they didn't get over there. You got over there, we support, we choose support, and our children all around us need this. We looking for a change in our community, the future. I'm fifty years old. I don't know how long I'm going to be around here, but if somebody will react now to think about the future of it, what's going to happen? We have, maybe it's going to cause too much traffic. Most people sleep at the time of morning or time of evening, you don't see too much traffic. Local businesses are dying and starving. You still say, no, I don't have one business. I have four businesses in Twenty Nine Palms. And I tell you, that takes a long time.
All right. For the public, I agree, council. Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'm only a college. Each and every one of you who are showing up today, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, this type of public engagement is really important for our community. This is how we make decisions, with your input. And so I really appreciate both sides that came out today. You know, there's a couple of things I just want to touch on that I was taking notes. The first thing is, I actually do think that we need to feel, you know, the general plan. That's something that we should be doing if we're talking about economic development for the long run. That's something that we should do. Now, I've actually brought up the most of four, and I'm just waiting for it to be brought before council. Housing, and mixed, housing is also a priority. Housing does though need to go hand in hand with economic development and jobs. And one of the things that I do appreciate about this project is that it has, it has housing for staff. You have a lot of people who are living in hotels who are actually working full time jobs. I've actually experienced that, and I think that we need to, I think a project like this is really, really important when you're going to have housing and employment at the same time. Sequoia consultants, I'm concerned that the, I'm concerned that the developer in the city are using the same Sequoia consultants. I'm told that that is within City Code. I do think that is a change in how we will have a future machine. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions for staff that, you know, just to clarify the name used for general city attorney. Time out legal being suitable is, this gives insurance that's what happens if you're a student.
Yeah, absolutely. There is a potential risk of litigation as occurred tonight from several of our speakers. If there was an approval of the project and the lawsuit was filed, see, we're being as far as for the developer, the inclusion of Google in evidence tonight that will require the developer to amend the agency, that when the developer will be made the legal piece and responsible for any loss to her. However, see, we are, so we would have to say litigation, loans for other settlements, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Keith Harrison, stuff about questions, sir. Can you tell me how much time, what, how many conditions are actually on this project?
Hey, I haven't read up the initial approval. It's been a while, I'd like to think.
No, I think there's a lot, so I just, the public's a lot of new.
Yeah, but there's, there's close to a hundred and a lot of more. And a lot of the environmental concerns are appropriate with the approval. A lot of people have mentioned that there's been community meetings on this project before this project was followed up. I think it was twenty twenty three, that was two years ago. These applications have been entered into the city for the last nine months or so.
Last question after staff, if you want, if you're associated with your staff before a group talk. You have a question? I have one more question regarding entitlements. For example, Mr. Carter, if the developer chooses, because if the donor chooses to purchase his property and maybe they sell their property, will this zoning change still be in effect?
Yes.
Is there any effect of it only states for this potentially developer?
Well, so that is part of the entirety of the project is the reason we follow that. So the commercial tourist would say there is the open space conservation. For this project? You would be on the general, and it would be on the zoning map. If the council were to project and announce resolutions of ordinances, that zoning won't be there.
What guarantee do you have that this developer is going to build this land and not let the rest of the developer?
Okay, so we would have a certain amount of time in which to build it under the condition of approval, and if we want to put other restrictions in there, we're changing to, first, not committed for not developing the open space and changing the open space we could be good as well. And we can't stop them from selling it to someone else to build the same project if they do that. So I'm just going to put that way. I mean, but the project is what the project is, so, you know, if you approve the project out of the developer.
Yeah, I understand. Just one third.
Review the project and review the project out of the developer. I just, I did have one. The other question was conservation partner. So that stays in unless, if you explain that, it stays in conservation, they just can't say a year from now, this all just go ahead and standard that you scale on at least. Right. With this open space conservation zone, any potential modification, that would have to have its own environmental analysis and go through the same process we're going through today with the planning commission and to the city council. So it would be, like, sometimes you see the approval, maybe revising someone down the road, yeah, or something like that. It doesn't mean something like that. It's much more.
Councilor agrees.
His next question is, whose zone is land?
Listen, is the.
Whose zone is the parents' own?
Okay, so the parents' own has been there since before the city authority, it was established by a center of Indian County. Quick, our records goes back to at least nineteen seventy seven, it's been out before it was this way. So it's been, this is, as is most of the city's narrative from the county.
And my next question is, how many times has a developer tried to develop this sign for residential purposes?
I don't know. There has been inquiries, I might, in my local last several years, there's been inquiries into our, into our cell, and then the forms, and has a lot of. So there's something that's probably right in seventies or eighties or ninety six or whatever.
And then on page one hundred and sixty one hundred and four hundred and fifty two, letter G nine, on sentence, it shall be underground pursuant to chapter nineteen point nine four. Two of these are the same to our one political resume by city council. What if two stories are working in that area now?
That would be, that would be a challenge.
Are they in there?
I have to, yeah, I don't know, but I don't know if they're in there today.
How much would it cost us to run utilities as it's in this condition of approval or for any developer?
Nobody on the developer's stocks, do we? Will the city's stocks do that? And I've seen this once over. And back to what I was.
I think it's a question that I don't think, I'm wrong. Is this only going to separate or organize the developer questions as well?
They can ask developer questions as well. Sometimes the developer asks staff, staff's going to answer. They can, and they don't want them to tell her.
So this question is specific to, and on each one, we want either one hundred and four hundred and fifty two, letter G ten. Parking and homes execution shall be provided and contained as identified only approved by the county. Areas reserved for access driver, high ass, and lower firemen shall be clearly designated. So with that condition, I have the California Fire Corps states that there costs to be a, two points, one that can be used and the other one that, is there for emergencies? Emergency vehicles, anything like that? So I guess my question would be, is one of the concerns was the vehicles, the whole miles, sorry. If the developer was looking to it, or if we add an additional condition to say, maybe the sign that's closest to residential be labeled as an emergency exit? So that that being the only entrance point in and out is the one closest to the highway?
Just I understand your question. So a little document was said, maybe by the fire department. So that does address those concerns, but I think we can certainly discuss about putting that condition on as an emergency exit only on the southern end. And as long as the emergency service is figured in there, I think that would probably be appropriate.
And proper signage though?
It would proper signage all the time. And just to confirm this, we started with the, like, twenty two, you can see. If I remember the one right, the even more, you know, it's like, okay, just one. Well, I'm ready for that. Obviously, this is, this affects a lot of folks in the, in Cove here. I was keeping a little track of how many folks lived in Twenty Nine Palms in Cove from out of town. It was almost, it was pretty close. But obviously, there's a lot of folks in town that are, obviously, this is a financial benefits Twenty Nine Palms. And we've heard over and over the middle of years, how do we keep our youth here? And it's always something about adding jobs. And this is an opportunity for some young folks to actually work in, in Twenty Nine Palms. So the benefits for that part, I like. As far as housing, our VHRs are down to three forty nine from four ninety. If this reset is just now starting to open up, if, I don't want to just talk, he said they're just getting ready to start, where it's going to start back to your team. Well, then it's, some of the other VHRs won't be used because of your reset. Then this opens more of the VHRs will also be used, using this type of hotel, resorts, slash land, and that's a word I can't even say right. But those, at those houses though, those VHRs, they all been refurbished because they had to be inspected by the city, they had to be put up the code. So they're already ready to go for rental or set. So that's another plus. You know, one of the things that they've forced at none, that's, you know, and I've heard over again, talking to other folks, you know, only using forty two acres out of one hundred fifty two, how many projects have done this? I mean, how many, how many people have gone to a town, it's there, I want to use twenty some percent of this whole thing and I'm going to keep the outline areas, you know, conservation and so on. That, that begins to be, so yeah. There was a little talk about the, when, when the zoning was done, the zoning was inherited. Some of the roads that we inherited, they were from the county in nineteen eighty seven, and some of those slipped into the cracks. As far as which ones shouldn't have been accepted, which ones could have been accepted. So obviously, land use is, was decided back in the seventies by the county, when most of those folks coming everywhere within Twenty Nine Palms was looking at what happened, was just put a bunch of others down. So I don't really, um, let's see. And I gotta, I gotta say, I think a little, that we had five people in Harris that lived in the city, six, I'm sorry, six, six former members that are here tonight that have lived in the city, you know, at least fifty years in Palm, and then start adding all those numbers up. And they, they see, I live here fifty eight years, I've been here since I was ten years old. And I see Twenty Nine Palms, you know, down in front of you, and you drive around, you ride next door, fourteen years old on a motorcycle all the way here. But now, of course, we wouldn't dare do that. So, um, I, I, I just feel that, just seeing what the folks have done, um, offlane have done, is listening to, to some of the concern, obviously, we're not completely separate. And there, sometimes I feel like this job is like a referee, only fifty-seven people are, are, are not like what we do. So, that's kind of where, I mean, and I, I do support the startup, as well as
Hi, I'm Sprenger. Oh, I'm just saying. Are you willing to read it over here?
I think it says staff recommendation.
Well, we have the, um, resolution, the proposal already, the, 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 the matter.
You don't need to really, you can just say, we should improve staff recommendation, that's actually wrong.
Alright. I need to rush that, please, uh, staff recommendation on moving this project for offlane project. So.
Council of the peers? Uh, council of the red?
Uh.
Council of the staff?
Uh.
You have a minutes?
Alright.
You have a
Alright.
I'll put a flag on.
Future council, easy items, council board. Who knows? Public comments. This is the time when both the different city councils issue within your decision, city councils that are not fully connected. All comments are being directed to the city council, which I like to say, including personal tax. You are the public, I expect, and we can profess a very formal, dedicated comments. We have a timely, mature, two-minute presentation. If you have a resume, so you can tell us, you can go on your schedule, it's free.